Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Call to order Rockingham's special meeting to discuss warrants in tuition rate. Five thirty-one, Thursday, January twenty-first. Pledge allegiance. Megan, would you like to lead us tonight in the pledge allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Almost happened, George. I almost forgot it halfway through in my panic of being put on the spot.
We'll give you more practice. Any adjustments to the agenda? To the agenda?
I have none, George.
Assuming that's going to be a no. Hearing none. Excellent communications and public comments. Any communications, public comments? Remembering that the chat is turned off for Rock board meetings. Hearing none. Okay. Let's get right into it. New business for discussion. Approved warnings for town meeting. Nicole had put together a draft and I had mentioned her last night, just throw some Xs in there. And I think, I think we'll be able to buzz right through this pretty quick floor and got figures for us. So I think that's all we need at this point and I guess let's get right to it. Before, before I have one question because I don't know the answer. After that, I think I'm done, but what happens if we don't apply all of the surplus dollars to future years? Is there, I think I read somewhere or somebody mentioned somewhere that maybe that just rolls into twenty-two? Chris, is that?
Roll. Yeah, it's like similar. I think it was the high school, I think, took the article five out. And so it rolls out, it rolls over. So yeah, you're correct, George.
So wherever the number is, let's say it's, I know it's not five hundred thousand, but let's say instead of applying five hundred thousand to future years in capital expenses, if we didn't apply all of that, then some of that would roll right into the budget for twenty-twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, I wish I'd understood that prior to, but okay, that's, that's good. Okay, um, yeah, Lynn, go ahead and put the, put the draft up there. So these, oh, sorry, Priscilla, go ahead. You had something?
Yeah, that's what they said at the high school. I hadn't understood that previously either, George. It was confusing to me. But I think with taxpayers, what they're needs next year, we probably have to consider that. I also have questions though, because the, I need to know what if I was looking at the expenses and I was coming out with, is the nine million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, is that current right now? Because you've got a bunch of encumbrances and there's a huge number of encumbrances there that haven't been dealt with. So I'm thinking that's this year's budget, Flora, is that correct?
No, that expense report is for the close year. That is not for this FY twenty-one. That's FY twenty.
Then the next question would be, why does it not agree with the number that we have at the bottom of that, the budget sheet that we just looked at on Tuesday night, which says it's eight million, sixteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-nine cents? Where did the extra million and a half come from?
I'm not sure what.
So you are looking at the detailed expenditure report. Which of the columns are you looking at?
I'm looking at actual twenty fiscal year twenty, actual.
You're talking about the expense report that I sent?
No, I'm looking at the, the report that you did for budget last from, for Tuesday night, which says our actual expenses for fiscal year twenty are eight million, sixteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty-nine cents.
If it was, if it was, if it was referenced on that, that budget is showing a different bottom line for FY twenty than what is reflected here is what you're, what you're asking?
Okay, so the difference. I'm trying to figure out why.
Okay, the difference between the budget and the, this expense report, this expense report is what all the general entries done and the year closed already, when all the information provided from the auditors. When I pulled the budget, the budget was pulled all the way in that part. And, and we haven't finished at that point, putting all the information in balance sheets, journal entries and bank reconciliations. So this is like the finalized document of the closing year for FY twenty. So that is like FY twenty, how it closed and the revenue report as well as the FY twenty, how it closed with all the recommendations and numbers that we got from auditors. That's the difference. At that point, when I run the budget report, we didn't have the auditors yet and we didn't have any final calculations.
Okay, and I have one more question for you on it.
Go ahead.
Five hundred thousand surplus prior year adjustment that's on the front of the revenue thing. That's over in the balance, but it's never put in the year-to-date revenue applied. So is, that was left out of that? Was that from previous years that were carried over into fiscal year twenty? Is that where that five hundred thousand came?
Yes.
And that's the five hundred thousand you're talking about because you hadn't applied it yet, but it should be applied.
So and if you check the, if you, if you review the revenue report and the page one, do you see it?
Got it.
So the revenue report on page one, it does says the five hundred thousand amount and it says surplus prior year adjustment. So that is the amount that you guys have encumbrance throughout the years. And that's how much you have in your surplus that you have carry over the years. Now with that amount and the revenue amounts that you got, that's how you get the ten point one hundred. But technically.
Okay, which was down a hundred and fourteen from the budget, but if the revenue doesn't come in, you don't have that. That's what you're saying, right?
So the revenue report stated that you were supposed to receive in revenue, ten million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars. You only received ten million, one hundred, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents in revenue. The difference between what you have budgeted in revenue as what you received in revenue is a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. So you did not receive a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars that you were expecting to receive.
But the five hundred thousand is not in that column. So doesn't that have to be added to that column?
The five hundred thousand, it is there. It is on overall in the first column from the budget. And, and if you see it, it's in the last column of five hundred thousand in your balance.
No, because you would have received that because that was already surplus. So shouldn't it go in the received column?
No, because you're not receiving that again. It was received, it was just transferred from previous years. It's not considered as an extra revenue.
Okay, so I'm, I'm inclined to accept these figures and work with those. I think.
Let's go on. I can ask her more later at another time. I don't want to hold up the meeting. Thank you.
Well, I think, you know, having a late start and getting kind of behind, maybe it seems that the final report would be more necessary to have before the budget, but I don't think timing really allowed this year is what it, is what it seems like to me. So I'm, I'd like to just accept those figures that she sent in the, one of her last emails and, and work from there tonight, if that, if that's okay with everybody. Rather than have her dig through and explain everything to us. So what we have is five hundred and, I just had it. And I lost it. We, we have about five hundred and forty-three-ish thousand dollars. And the question is, what do we want to do with it? So I think Lynn, at this point, it'd be good to put that, that up there for us again. And now we have a few options. It sounds like we can leave some to roll over to help assist with next year's budget. We have some that we could apply to capital reserves, some that we could shift off to any following year. Is that accurate? Are those all of our options? I see Chris nodding yes. Open up for discussion. What's, what do we want to do, guys?
George?
Yes, sir.
So somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Is this number five forty-five, three eighty-nine? Is that the number? Surplus?
Believe that's the one.
Okay. And then the capital reserve fund is already at one hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
That's how I understood it. Flora, can you confirm that? So we have that already available. So we could, if we wanted to add to that, it would be in addition to, that's, that's how I'm, how I'm seeing it. So.
My suggestion, if, if it's discussion, would be to take, you know, four hundred thousand and put it back to the taxpayers and a hundred thousand added to the capital reserve. I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Your suggestion or your thought is four, four hundred K back taxes, taxpayers and what was it, a hundred and forty or a hundred and?
One hundred even added to the capital reserve. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know how often we use that. So I don't know if we put any in it at all. So I, I think he's asking a question, I guess.
I think usually there's probably, I see, I see your hand, Priscilla and Chris. Hang on just a second. I think usually that there's a, you know, projects in, you know, coming down the pipeline that, you know, at one point the middle school auditorium was on the list, which got pulled because of the COVID year, really. I believe that was back toward the beginning that was decided. But, you know, it's for, you know, new boiler that Ms. Kennedy talked about, stuff like that. It's what it seems like. Priscilla, go ahead. So wait, hang on, hang on real quick. Just so I'm clear, Jason, your suggestion was four hundred K back taxpayers, a hundred K added to capital reserve?
Yeah, I just.
And then the rest of it would just trickle over into this year's budget?
I, I guess. I don't know. I, I don't know.
Well, the four hundred thousand would also, if he's doing it that way.
I guess I'm looking for clarification on what.
No, it doesn't go back. Yeah, Chris, why don't you, can you, would you mind chiming in? Cause my understanding is that the four hundred K wouldn't go back into the budget. It would go directly to reduce taxes.
Yeah, if, if that four hundred K goes back into, it does reduce taxes by going back into it. You're reducing the taxes because you're not asking the, in the future, you're not, you won't be asking for that money again. So it kind of does the same thing. It goes back to taxes through the budget. And in the past, what Rockingham has done is exactly what you're doing. They've, they've put, they put some money into reserve and they put another one to go back to. They put some in capital and they put rest into defray costs of the budget for future, future years. And that's what you, you see in there. So you would, you would, you would take, based on Jason's suggestion, you would have one, the one hundred go into the capital and the four hundred go into, to defray the, the taxes. But you'd have to make sure that the way it's split between that way, that it's to the dollar. So it does, it does reduce taxes, but it reduces taxes through the budget because you're putting it back into it.
Priscilla, I see your hand. Just a second. So Chris, does that mean, so that doesn't mean that it's added into a, when we look at the budget that we're asking to approve, that's not going to be reflected?
It's because it's for, it's for down the road. It's not for this.
Okay, so Priscilla, go ahead.
As it, as it was explained to me, it, it will go against, if we don't put any year in there. And we don't, we shouldn't even put it in there, honestly. We should just leave that one out like the high school did at their meeting on Tuesday night. We should leave it out and let the, all of that go into next year's budget, twenty-twenty-two, because that's when people are hurting this next year. And so it would, and what you would do is explain it at our open meeting. And when we have that in February, when we have to tell the taxpayers about our budget and do all of that stuff, you would explain to them that all of, all of the excess from twenty-twenty will go to offset taxes next year. But we don't put an amount in there because if you put an amount in there, then you, and you're, like you said, you've got to have the exact dollar amount. So just leaving it without, you know, it will roll over and it will go to the twenty-twenty-two. You skip a year. Twenty goes to twenty-two, nineteen went to twenty-one, which is our current year. That, that's the way it goes because you have to vote on it in March. And so that's the only way it can go. What they did at the high school is something for everybody to consider is they were really leery about putting too much into a capital fund because people are hurting and you're asking them to vote more money. So we want to be careful how much we put there. I think maybe, you know, we should put some. We've got at least a hundred and seventy-nine thousand according to, to Flora. And I guess my question, but not for tonight, is, you know, where the capital have been used in the last couple of years put in there. And I'm sure she can hear me out that easily. But I, I think one hundred thousand might be too much for the taxpayers to vote. So we might want to consider a lower number. We did put three hundred thousand the year before, a hundred thousand last year. So I think going down either twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand, you know, I might even be pushing it. Anyway, that, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, I think, yeah, I see it, Jason. Give me a second. So we also have to keep in mind what are some of those capital expenses that would possibly need to happen around the school? So yeah, I hear, I hear you. We want to balance that out real well, but yeah, wrapping my head around it. Go ahead, Jason.
I'm in, I'm inclined to agree with Priscilla. I, I don't, I mean, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, that's, to me, that's a great deal of money. Maybe we round it up to two hundred thousand. I, I don't know. I don't know how much a roof is going to cost or something like that for, for a school. I would, I just want to get the money to the taxpayers as quickly as possible. So whatever year that is, it's still a little murky for me. I know we have, like, we have a hundred thousand dollars this year going to the taxpayers. So whatever that, whatever the most we can as quickly as possible to the taxpayers, I'd like to do. And I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Pratt, when you say go into the budget, I, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. So whatever dollar we mount, amount, that, that's not like more money in the budget that the school has to use, right? That's like, they can't use that, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, go ahead, Chris.
You know, I would think, you know, based on, you know, how hard you guys are trying to keep the, the taxes down. And if you're, if you're really looking down the road, it would make sense based on your current practices of reducing the budget is to take the full amount and not have an article to put anything into capital.
So.
Is that your recommendation, Pratt?
I don't know if it's so much your recommendation, but something to take into consideration. Cause I know you guys are working hard to, to keep the dollar amount down. You know, we've cut a lot, you know, from the, from the school. And so if you're, if you're looking long-term, you know, that's why the high school did what they did.
So, so hang on, one more question real quick for me. And I see, I see Megan, then I can see Priscilla. I'm sorry, I keep asking. It's probably the same question over and over again. If we do not specify where money goes from this money that we're looking to appropriate, we don't specify, then it just goes into twenty-twenty-two. FY twenty-twenty-two, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'll probably ask it again in five minutes, but. Megan, go ahead.
So this is for, for Mr. Pratt. Can you kind of, it seems to me, and talk me down if I'm wrong, is the capital reserve fund kind of like what I have at Parks Place, a, a major repairs line item? Because I learned this the hard way. I got really line item happy and I pushed mine really, really, really low at, at the organization. And then we had the pipes burst in the basement. So if there's any catastrophic, you know, a roof collapses or something big happens, would major repairs come out of the capital reserve fund?
Yeah, it's like a rainy day fund for, you know, major projects or improvements or something unexpected happens to, to any of the schools. I know over the, in the past three years that I've been here, each year Rockingham has put money into the capital fund. So if you guys decide to not put some in this year, I mean, it's not like it's been ignored over the years. Rockingham has done a, board has done a great job of keeping that kind of flowed the money.
Yeah, so it's kind of like a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar insurance policy in case anything major at these schools happens. I mean.
That is, yeah, that is correct.
It happened to us. We got a, you know, a huge bill that we didn't have a line item for. So that's the only question I have. I mean, I, I don't know the right answer, but I got to make sure I understand what we're not funding versus what we would.
Or, or pre-planned large projects.
Okay.
So if there's something that's needed, you know, that we've, we put off a year, we didn't do anything. I don't know what was needed. But anyway, yeah, so.
So for instance, the, at one point, right before COVID, they, we put the, the Rockingham board put money in the capital fund because the auditorium needs, needs work. It was put off last year. They, but they still put money in the capital reserve, but they didn't spend any money out of capital reserve for the auditorium based on the current, you know, when it hit us, this COVID hit us last spring. So that's exactly what it is, Megan, what you're describing.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Priscilla. Go ahead.
That's okay. So we, if, in other words, Megan, my understanding, as in Mr. Pratt, correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is that if we took like, let's say twenty-five thousand, like he said, it would round it up just a little over two hundred thousand, twenty-five thousand and put it in that capital reserve, that's like putting it aside so that doesn't offset taxes. It would be twenty-five thousand that we were kind of saving for that rainy day. And so maybe, I don't know, there were quite a few things that Jerry mentioned that need to get done next year. And Mr. Pratt, maybe you can address that as to, you know, is that going to deplete everything and we're going to not have the money?
I mean, so, I mean, it's, capital fund is a tricky thing. I mean, you're, you're trying to plan, but you also need to make sure you have enough in there for an emergency situations. You know, but you were right. If you put twenty-five thousand in there, that's twenty-five thousand less to defray taxes. You know, and this is one of the difficult decisions that's the, the board has to make in regards to what we're going to do. I think if you look at the situation we're currently in right now, we've never faced this before. So it would make, you know, not that I'm advocating either way, but I'm saying you guys are making difficult decisions. You guys base your decisions based on trying to keep taxes down. Any money that you take away from that and put in capital, that will not be defraying the cost of taxes. So, I mean, usually, yeah, people put money into the capital funds, but we're not in typical times here.
Oh, but we do have a pretty substantial surplus, more so than normal years, it seems like, just judging by the last couple of article pages I have.
Really, Rockingham's done a great job over the years of keeping money being trickled into the capital fund. I don't think one year is going to break, break the bank in regards to capital.
Jason, go ahead.
Flora, can, or Mr. Pratt, can you tell me, what does the high school have in capital reserve fund? How many dollars?
Priscilla, you might know. Did you guys just talk about?
I don't remember. I mean, I talked about it Tuesday night, but I, I honestly don't remember.
So if it was not.
I mean, they're looking at, they're looking at also caving eventually, all of that. And that's a huge thing where they'll have to do a, some kind of a, another vote by the, by the taxpayers. We never voted it one of the towns, so it never got pushed forward. Otherwise it might be going now.
The, the high school is, you know, like, like Priscilla said, they've been putting off that, the whole driveway repair for a long time with drainage and everything like that. They just got through doing a huge HVAC project that we got, they used some of the money from their capital. So I'm not quite sure what their capital is right now, but I mean, they didn't, you know, they didn't put anything in their capital this year based on not knowing.
It's zero.
It's zero?
Yeah. For, for capital for the high school, they didn't put anything in their budget. It's zero.
And it's not, and it's not large enough to be memorable as, I mean, I would remember a hundred and eighty thousand dollars if I, if I attended that meeting. So I'm assuming it's not that large.
Uh, Flora, they have zero in their fund?
They, they put, they put, we all know they put zero in the fund. The, what the board wants to know, Flora, is what do they have left in the capital reserve?
Yeah, they must have something in there because they must still have money aside for the driveway. I think they just kind of were putting it on hold from my outside perspective, but could be wrong.
You know, that, you know, that's something we can get you to, to keep the meeting going. We can get you guys that information.
Yeah, so, so the other thing too is, and not just looking ahead to this upcoming year, what's the next year look like? We know by these previous articles, we have a hundred thousand going to twenty-twenty-three. So just throwing that out there. If somebody thought it was good flow of dollars to, for that as an option, that's, that's an option as well. I can tell you right now, me personally, I'm, I'm feeling kind of inclined to bring that reserve fund up to, you know, like two hundred and fifty thousand. And I, I, I really like to have a savings account for bad, bad days or if, if things need to happen. So that's, that's just my, my thought, my opinion. The rest of it, I'm, I'm good with whatever anybody wants to do with it, to be honest with you. I'd like, like to go back to taxpayers. If some trickles into the twenty-twenty-one budget somehow, then fine, but I, I guess my only thing, I'd like to bump up the, the reserve just a little bit to, to bring it up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Go ahead, Jason.
Is Jason Benson here? I'd like to hear what he has to say.
I am. Yeah, I, I think that we should bring our reserves up just a little bit and then the bulk of it going back into the budget to ease some of this pain on the taxpayers at this point. That's about it. I think George's idea, bring it up to two fifty.
I think we're all in agreement. We want to put it, put a good, you know, get back to the taxpayers and show that we're really behind them here. Go ahead, Priscilla.
I, you're going to have to explain this to the taxpayers and that you're, you know, saving for a rainy day when they're, when they're hurting. So I'm hearing you. That's, you know, that's the top of what I had suggested was about fifty. But what if we did twenty-five, George? Would you be okay with that? Twenty-five thousand, because you're going to have to explain it. Cause if the taxpayers voted down, it won't be there anyway.
Yeah, well, if something catastrophic happens, you have to explain that too. But the other, and I'm not disregarding it.
I'm willing to do a motion for either twenty-five thousand or fifty thousand, depending upon what you tell me right now that you really want in there.
I, so I'm going to say this. I think what we're giving back to the taxpayers is probably more significant than what they've seen in a long time. is probably more significant than what they've seen in a long time. So I think that's a real hefty gesture. At the same time as doing that, I, I see you, Jason. The same time as doing that, I'd like to secure, you know, I'd like to be secure in, in that reserve fund to be prepared. I don't want to be unprepared for something and all of a sudden we got to spend a fortune and then that leaves something, leaves us short for other schools or other needs in the, in our, in our Rockingham. So I I personally, yeah, that's, that's my suggestion. I'm, I don't, to bring it up to two hundred fifty thousand, which is about seventy thousand there, and then the rest back to the taxpayers. Some form of that, but it's not just me. So Jason, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
So if you bring it to two fifty, the money that we're going to put in is seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. If we bring it to two twenty, for example, the money we're going to put into it is forty thousand, six fifty-two. That's that forty thousand.
That brings it to two twenty?
Two twenty. And then every ten, so on and so forth.
That would bring, let's see, so that would be how much? You just calculated it out?
Forty, forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
I, I, I'd buy that. It, you know, except for everybody else. Flora, yeah, I see you got your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, just to go back to what you guys were saying. So according to the auditors in their draft, the high school has for capital improvements, three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, five hundred and eighty-six. That's what they have in their capital improvement.
With a big chunk of that headed toward a driveway. I, I assume.
No, that's a separate article.
Priscilla's correct. That was a separate article we voted on last year.
So there's money already set aside for the driveway, plus there's that three hundred. I mean, we're not really here to.
No, nothing set aside for the driveway. It was a separate article and what they failed to do was put it on one of the, the they failed to warn it for, I think it was Rockingham, they didn't warn it for. And so we didn't vote on it. So then we got into COVID and they decided that because we were in COVID, not to do a separate special article for Rockingham to vote on, because all of the towns had to approve it because it's a union high school. So it's not been approved. We'll have to start all over.
So what I first heard was it's separate, and then what I'm hearing again is it's not separate.
It is separate. It was a separate article. We did not put it on our, on our warnings, so we couldn't vote on it in Rockingham. So because we couldn't vote on it in Rockingham, it kind of got shoved aside and it not passed. Every town had to approve it as a separate article.
Okay, I got, I got all that. So just and I don't know why we're still talking about. So three hundred thousand, whatever it was you just said, does not include the driveway funds? Or it does include, or is that all the money?
That's all their money for capital progress.
Perfect. Let's, let's move on from the high school. So, so what I'm seeing there is that there is a chunk of money pretty, pretty good. In the back of their minds, there is, it hasn't been appropriated yet, but they're going to have to put a driveway. Anyway, regardless, back to Rockingham. The last suggestion, if it was a suggestion, I'm okay with that. Does anybody have any thoughts, disagreements? Priscilla, go ahead.
For the, we've done this and I think you're okay with two twenty. So I am going to move that we put in Article
Lynn, this is who?
In Article Two, we put forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars.
Any change?
Year twenty twenty fund balance to create a reserve fund to be used for capital improvements at Rockingham Schools and also to delete Article Three, because anything else would go in fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Well, I don't think we need to have a motion to delete our, an article, right?
Yes, it's on there. We do.
Okay, so the motion is to add forty thousand, six hundred fifty-two, Lynn. Thank you so much. From the fiscal year twenty twenty fund balance to create, create a reserve reserve fund to be used for capital improvements, Rockingham Schools authorize, unauthorized the board to expend said funds. Any discussion on that motion? Move to vote. Yes. All in favor? Megan, go ahead.
Yes.
Jason Benson, go ahead.
Yes.
Jason Terry, go ahead.
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Yes, and for me, it's a yes too. So, all right, Article Two is done. Motion passes. Excellent. So moving on to Article Three.
We just voted to take it out.
Well.
As part of my motion.
Yeah, but I don't think we need to vote to take it out, right?
Yes, we did, and we just voted, because it was part of my motion.
Oh, Priscilla, someday we're going to have coffee.
I, I am so sorry. I didn't mean to do that to you. I honestly didn't. I mean, I should have spoken up, I guess, and said that was part of the motion before you voted, but does, is everybody okay with that? Let's find out if they're okay with that. I mean, that way, the money's going to go into our budget and it's going to reduce the.
So, so, all right.
And if you have money left over next year, we can vote for it for final first future years.
So the only last question is, are there any funds that we want to move to a following year? Anybody have any inclination to do that? I'm seeing no's. Priscilla, shake your head. No? Okay, excellent. We can remove that then. So that becomes three. Oh, I'm scrolling and it's not even my screen. Okay, so now we have to we have to calculate the percentage that the per equalized pupil spending is up. Flora, you're the, you're the math wizard. Would you mind doing that for me? I have it right here. Last year was nineteen six twenty-one. I'm seeing three and a half percent down. Eighteen thousand, nine fifty-one. Is that right? Three and a half percent? I didn't hear you. I think you said four.
Three point four.
Three point four. So, okay, so that eighteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-one and five cents would be three point four less than spending for the current year.
We wanted to go to two places. Three point four two.
What do they do last year? They did do it two places last year, I guess. I don't think it really matters at that point, but maybe it does.
It just looks a little better, three point four two.
Yeah, is that what it is? Three point four two?
I think, yeah.
Okay, three point four two. Excellent. We are moving along. So just read this article real quick, make sure it's the way we want it written. We can vote to approve it and move on, yes?
We just need to rewrite the oh, did we rewrite the amount? Eighteen thousand, nine hundred, forget it.
Yep, that's what Flora provided us with, with, in her email the other day, or yesterday. Feels like a week since the last one. All right, so I'll just read it out loud. Shall the voters of the town of Rockingham School, shall the voters of the Rockingham Town School District approve the school board? The expand ten million? There's a typo there, I feel like. To expend, yeah, the board to expend ten million? Change the, the, the to two. There we go. Thank you so much, Lynn, for doing this for us. The voters of Rockingham Town School District approve the school board to expend ten million, seven hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, as it's written, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing fiscal year. It is estimated that the proposed budget, if approved, will result in education spending of eighteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-one and five cents as written per equalized pupil. This projected spending per equalized pupil is three point four two less than spending for the current year. Does that sound good? Are we, we, we good with that? Let her fix it up here and then. Because I think this has to get to the town like, what, tomorrow? Yeah. While she's doing that, I'll entertain a motion to accept Article Three or to approve Article Three, not accept it. Give me a, give me a one, one of these, somebody?
Can we approve all of them at the end? Because we haven't really approved the articles. We've only approved the amounts.
Well, we approved the first one. But yeah.
We approved the amount to go in it and we deleted one.
Right, fair enough, fair enough. So that's already, we already voted on that amount, so it is what it is. So, yeah, you're right. Okay. Compensation, I really don't care. I think maybe at this point it'd be easier to leave it, but if you want to do something else with it, I really don't care.
I like it from a standpoint that Jason, he could take his and he could do a scholarship as he wanted to do. I've used it for some things to contribute to the schools and do that kind of stuff. I think you remember, there may be also somebody, you know, that, that needs it for other things. So I think leaving it because it's a recognized thing that, that the boards do get that. We also have to put money in for the treasurer for her to get that, who is always Kathleen Neathaw. I would leave it, but that's my opinion.
Any discussion, more discussion on that? Flora, go ahead.
Your compensation or stipend is different from the one from the high school. So I just don't know if all the boards have to have the same or not. Like, this was my first year with that magnet. And yours guys had like different amounts. It, it was all different.
Well, I think.
How much do those guys make? Because they work a lot less than we do.
It's okay if it's different amounts.
Yeah, so I think looking back at the, some previous warning, article warnings, it's been unchanged for some time now, so. And I think next year, now you got to handle on things. This is like, this was a crash course this year. So I, next year will be, I, I'm certain it'll be so much smoother for all of us, but yeah, I'm okay with leaving it. Do we have to vote on that or?
We have to approve the, the, all of them. If you look at the top to make sure the wording at the top is right, George.
All right, let's go back up there. Somebody told me I have to write a report. When do I have to have that done by?
Yesterday.
No.
Well, it's going to be late, like usual, so. Actually, a legitimate question. Do we have, you guys happen to have, I mean, I can reach out to the town, but you guys happen to have a copy of maybe a previous year's report? So I have an idea of what to do?
Nope, solo, George, solo.
I have one, George, if you need one.
I, I need one. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I'll get that to you.
Thanks.
Um, there's not a lot in here as far as what you have to do. What you have to do is prepare to explain the budget at our meeting. I don't, I'm just trying to see what there was as far as anything that is written. I don't think there's, I don't think there's, I can't find stuff.
There wasn't a report?
I'll look through it. I'll look through it and call you.
Okay.
Up the meeting.
Okay, so yeah, well, I'll be sitting up there answering questions of the budget and looking forward to that. So all right, so, yeah, we'll read the top, make sure we're good, and then I think we can vote on it and score them on out of here. So the legal voters of the Rockingham Town District are hereby notified and warned to meet in the theater at the town hall with Zoom available in said town on Monday, March first, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. And to adjourn to vote by Australian ballot on or before Tuesday, March second, twenty twenty-one to act on the following articles, one through five. Do we still have five, Lynn?
I just checked, yep.
Yeah, okay. And Rockingham polls will be open March second, twenty-one, at the Masonic Temple from eight A M, seven P M. Okay.
Do, does everyone know where the Masonic Temple is, or do we need to say, you know, X Street, Bellows Falls?
I'm looking at the previous years and I don't see that listed. So I go on a limb and say not to, not to worry about it. Priscilla, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, last year didn't even give at the Masonic Temple. Just said the other, but that's kind of nice and it's, it's the regular polling place. Are we, are we acting on the following articles, one through five? Should that be after that? Because they're only voting on two through four. The one, Article One and Article Five are discussion at our, at the meeting.
Well, isn't number one approving last year's reports?
Well, it's just hearing the reports.
Also, take it of last year.
But that does not go on the Australian ballot. So two through three go on the ballot.
Right.
Two through four go on the ballot this year. It's different this year.
Okay, so maybe we had in parentheses at the end of two, three, and four, we just put Australian ballot. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm for meaning to act on them and two through four would be by Australian ballot. I don't know. I, I, it's a question. I have no idea. Is this what you're saying, two through four?
Well, two through four is the Australian ballot.
Right, to act on the following articles. Okay, they're voting to act on the following articles.
Two through.
But we're actually, I mean, we're hearing the others. George is right. We're hearing the others. So may.
See, this is the type of stuff.
It has to be one through five.
This is the type of stuff that I'm sure is important to some people, but it really isn't that important to me. I don't know if it. I don't know.
I would just leave it as, as it was.
Sounds good.
I don't. I think it's fine. I mean, maybe we'll get bit for somewhere along the line, but there won't be anything we haven't experienced so far this year, so. Okay. Is everybody good? Any more discussion? What are you laughing at? I'll entertain a motion to accept this accept this warning of articles as, as it's written.
I'll so move.
Excellent. Any discussion on the motion? We're good to go. Megan, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Jason and Terry?
Yes.
Jason Benson?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Motion passes. All right, now we're moving on to thank you, Lynn. Moving on to approved tuition rate for twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. FY twenty-one, twenty-two. Approved tuition rate. We got something sent for that, too. Let me try to find it. I don't really know how to read it, but she gave us a figure. allowable tuition for FY twenty-two, nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. Right? George, yep?
Um, our superintendent had a, I know he commented at our last meeting on, on Tuesday about the current, um, rate and not wanting to go too high because then students might not come. So, uh, I don't know whether he wants to recommend the amount that's currently or whether he has another amount that he wants to recommend, but I think we should hear from him.
I think the current tuition rate, I was looking, I called it up on the AOE site right before here. Was it six, for Rockingham, the tuition rate was, um, sixteen thousand. So.
So what does that mean for us?
Keep it, you keep, you keep it the same as it currently is, is sixteen thousand.
I think, okay.
Just, is that, is that in comparison with other schools around, around us?
Uh, let me take a look.
The only reason I'm, uh, my head's doing cross things is because I think I have in my notes here that 19,932 was the previous year, uh, was that last year's tuition or?
That was the per equal, uh, per equalized student thing.
Yeah, tuition rate, tuition rate isn't the same as per, per pupil spending. This is just saying.
Yeah, that, well, that's two different numbers here. I got nineteen, nine, thirty-two that Flora sent us from allowable tuition for FY 22. Uh, nineteen, nine, thirty-two, which is what I have in my notes from last time also. So that's why I was questioning, was the nineteen, nine, thirty-two what we had last year or?
No, it's, it's different. The tuition rate is different than the allowable. This is.
Oh.
Yeah, the tuition rate last year is right here. Can you see my screen?
Uh, nope, it's trying, I think. Well, if you stop, take your word for it. If you say it was 16, yada, 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 then that's what it was and we'll.
Yeah, for K, for full-time K was 16. Elementary, it was 16 and secondary, it was 16.
So 16K across the board.
Yep, for the FY 2021 final announced tuition data table. Right now it is at 16,000, so.
16,000 even?
Yep.
Any recommendations?
One question for Mr. Pratt first. Is, did you just look up and so that it compares with the ones around us? Or are there's lower or there's higher?
Look at window, if you look at window, uh, central, it's between 16, four and let's see, fourteen, between 14 and 16. Um, let's see, southwest is between, is around 16. Uh, Windsor Central, 16 to 17. Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty in line with everything else, Priscilla.
Okay.
So, uh.
I personally think we should go with Mr. Pratt's recommendation.
I do as well. Is that your recommendation, Chris, to, uh?
I should say, keep it the same as it been in the past.
I, I happen to agree. Any discussion on that? So we have to vote on this, yes?
Yeah.
All right.
I guess I, I should have moved, keep it the same.
I, you were cutting out. Was that a motion to keep it the same? Any?
Part of the superintendent's recommendation.
Be the same of $16,000. Yeah, we all. Okay, any discussion on that motion? Ready to vote? Jason Benson?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Jason Terry?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Motion passes. 16K per year is the tuition rate. All right, we think we're, are we wrapped up already? All right, moving on to director's comments. Anybody want to go first? Go ahead. Jason Terry?
I'm a, I'm a little disappointed in Priscilla tonight. I would have really expected a Bernie Mittens background, uh, with your Zoom meeting today. So, Priscilla, you gotta work on your Bernie Mittens background, please.
My what?
George explained that to her.
We'll, moving on. She can go back and watch the video. Okay, so, um, oh, Bernie Mittens, not burning Bernie Sanders. All right, so, uh, Megan, go ahead. Any director's comments?
I don't. Um, just thank, thank you to Flora and, and Mr. Pratt for guiding us through this. And, and George, thank you for asking all the questions. I was too scared to.
Thank you. Uh, Jason Benson?
I got nothing tonight.
Excellent, thank you.
Thanks for hosting.
Uh, Priscilla?
I want to share something that I read today. I got, uh, retired NEA today. And what it said was we need to learn to be a little, to give a little grace because we need a little grace. I've learned to be more gentle with myself. Expectations have to look different right now and it's been incredibly hard for all of us across the board. This isn't normal, but we're doing the best we can. That means pausing for a break and remembering that everyone is doing their best and no one is handling the pandemic situation easily, let alone perfectly. If we acknowledge that and remember, it will all turn out okay. And then it's just gonna take us some time. All of us are frustrated. But remember to give yourself a little bit of grace. That means students, parents, staff, administration and our school boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. Uh, everybody's gone except me. Uh, I'll keep it quick. Chris, regarding your email about snow days, uh, right on. Thank you as a parent. It was really nice to read that. And second, uh, Megan, thanks for the invite to the, your Parks Place, uh, roundtable. That was, it was pretty cool. And when I got home, well, I was at home, but after the meeting, I, before I went back to work, I said to my wife, they, I don't know that people really realize the, that Parks Place is really, uh, a massive hub for any need whatsoever. So it was, uh, even though I showed up late and it was brief, um, it was cool. So thank you and, um, you know, we'll try to join again as, as able. So, uh, that's it for me. See you guys Monday. Call this meeting, I'll take a motion to call this meeting adjourned. Somebody put a hand up? Yep, Jason Terry, all in favor? Good night. Thank you all so much.